Good morning. Uh, calling the order. Uh, we do have a quorum taking motion to approve the agenda and the maps. Just a second.
I'll second it.
All favor I?
I.
I pose. Here, good morning, Rich.
Guys, last week, parental bidders for projects. Cited a book and we're gonna get some really low bids, but we did on the paving, I guess, when you consider where the estimate was and what we're seeing. We had, I don't know if we had like six bidders on that paving project, so we got some pretty competitive bid back, so. Pretty happy with the numbers, even though I was, we were hoping maybe we could see some better ones, but it is what it is, that's what the costs are going for.
All of them were within.
They were, they were really, really competitive.
You know, you got good.
We got good bids, there's no way around that, and so I'll bring next week, uh, some information on award contract. The, the parental bid on the box cover, it was really well too, it was really good too. Only difference, the only bad one is the, the bridge on three ninety, that high federal bridge. Just kinda got the numbers this morning looking over the breakdown of it. That, that estimate is roughly twenty-seven percent higher than what the engineer's estimate is. The biggest thing I can see on that project was lump sum items as far as mobilization and grid removal, those lump sum items were the biggest. There was most of the difference between the engineer's estimate and the bid for that bridge part was due to mobilization and grid removal as a lump sum item. They were about, I'll tell you here, I'll write some numbers real quick. There was sixty-two thousand dollars difference in the engineer's estimate for those, just those two items. So, I've been talking to DOT about it, and I, I'll bring this information back to you on Monday. I don't know if there's a whole lot, we can't really change anything in the, in the plans, that's gonna make a difference as far as their late start date is June twenty twenty-two, so let me have a good project this year. So it's not a scheduling thing, I don't think, it's just, I think the market is saturated with bridge projects right now, even the steel numbers and stuff don't look terrible.
I'd say it's that stuff up, kind of, I know steel's up, obviously, but it's concrete products up.
Um, it really didn't, it, it didn't show in the, in the estimate really what, I mean, an estimate's an estimate, but I didn't see anything grossly crazy in their estimate as far as why things would be off, other than those two items alone in their estimate was, was why it was. And then the roadway stuff was inherently a little bit higher anyway, um, probably mostly because they're subbing that work out, but. Our bridge funding, um, can take the hit, the, the problem, I gotta say the problem. We're only allowed, when we put this project together in the federal system and we had to come up with estimates right away and what we thought it was gonna cost before we can even design the bridge. Well, we figured it was gonna be a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar bridge, cause that was probably the going rate of a bridge, well, as it turns out, the estimates were higher. But they only allowed us the money in that initial estimate, so we'll probably only see, we only get out of that total cost, which, the total estimated cost, the bid cost for that bridge is five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We'll get a hundred and, I don't remember exactly what the numbers now, whatever the federal aid was, is what will, will max out the federal aid, and the rest, it's gonna come from our H D funds. Which, we're okay, it's gonna take more of our bridge funds than we had planned, but we won't be, we won't be burying that fund per se, that it won't. We only get two hundred and something thousand a year, so it's gonna slow us down a little bit, but I don't think that letting it, we have to have them let by September, so I don't think trying to re-let it now is gonna make a big difference in anything. In fact, it could make it worse, because maybe there are more projects in the pipeline that are gonna make schedule.
With all this extra money coming around, raise some of the stuff, I, I think you'll see an increase of that between this year and next year.
Well, and the biggest problem is, we don't, we only got one bidder on this project, so we really don't know how competitive it is, there's a, there's an IM.
Oh, there's only one bid?
There was only one bid. I mean, my brick, my box cover, I had seven bidders, but a lot of box covers are getting put in by dirt contractors, because it's, they're doable, I mean, there's no, you make, make a pad, you place precast sections in and you walk away, I mean, it's, it's up their alley, and, and so really, really good prices there, but when you get to the structural stuff, it's a little bit more specialty and.
Who was, can you say who the bidder was?
Uh, the apparent little bidder for the bridge was Dixon Construction, which is who we had down on the south part last time, our last bridge.
Oh, three hundred and forty-second.
Three forty-second, and then the apparent little bid on the box cover was PCI, progressive contractors, and then the paving project was Flan out at View, and we had them in Mitchell County two years ago, through the good contractor picture. I was surprised by them getting it, since their paving rights passed, passed a cruel plan, but.
I figured cool, what happened, I really did, but.
They did end up getting our visitor.
Yeah, they got Mitchell.
Yeah, and they, what was the deal here? Whatever it was, Mitchell County or Worth County, I think it was probably here, I think there was only a thousand dollars, a thousand or seven thousand dollars difference between.
It was cool, it was roll and the nats.
Yeah, it was, we got competitive bids, I'm sad about, I always think, wish things were cheaper, but we, 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 right. We did good. I'll bring stuff Monday, next week for signing contracts and whatnot, and recommendations and things. Um, I'm gonna be gone, I, I guess I got nobody in the office today over there, and both of them are sick. So, I'm gonna head over there and take care of business over there, I'll be gone after tomorrow, taking a little vacation out west, so. But if you guys have any questions or comments. Oh, one thing, um. Street names now. Three hundred and, I guess it's three seventy-fifth, is it, it's a level B, not plowed road, off of Thrush. We building a cabin out there, what will be? And, uh, apparently the mail carrier won't deliver mail. So that dress, we sent, she said it fifth, it's a little, it's it's a little L-shaped, little L-shaped road that comes off of Thrush and goes up the three.
Three six, no, go ahead, it's.
It's in the middle.
It's in the middle.
That's three sixty-seven is, three sixty-seventh was east.
Thrush, it's three seventy-fifth. Right off of, it's between swallow and brush.
Yeah.
And, uh, so.
On the Rosa.
Yeah.
So, that's the hot term, I mean, this.
So, uh, it's a level B road, we have other residences on level B roads, we haven't changed their classification, but for the residents out there, we'll probably have to look at following these a portion of the road next winter. I don't know if it's because it's a level B, the mail carrier won't carry it, I'm not gonna recommend that we change the classification of the road, they know it was a level B before it got there. But we might have to take the no plow signs now, at least on that end, and then of course on swallow, I think it's on swallow. We've got that little bridge there, that's, it's a tiny, tiny bridge. Probably one at one time, we were just not even thinking about replacing, cause there's no traffic on that, other than it's accessible from both angles, so it's the difference.
Yeah.
So, uh, the request was, what can we do to let them get their mail at their mailbox, and I'm, I don't know if it's the level B. What's that?
Is it your problem?
Uh, not, I mean, if it's, if it's because the road's not plowed, then it might be an issue, but if we're not gonna change classification and they still won't do it, then I guess they can put their mailbox up on Thrush. It's a public road, um, but the question, I guess, is do we change classification, because it lives on it, we, the, the.
Doesn't that?
We haven't in the past.
We have it in the past, and it's not like we don't maintain them, anyway, they're not dirt paths like everybody else's level Bs.
So I can see where you're taking the snow, plow signs down, which is, yeah.
We'll work on that end first and see, I don't know.
Doesn't residents people living on it, just automatically justify it as being a, no longer being a class B or not?
Do you know what the post office is saying?
All I, all, all I was told by the landlord was that they won't deliver mail because of the signs, I don't know what's, they never specified that sign.
I think we just take it, just take personal, both, road not plowed down, you probably find.
It's not like it's not getting maintained, it's just a random maintenance.
Yeah.
So, but we'll, we'll start, we'll start there first, and if it becomes an issue, then, I mean, obviously we'll wanna maintain that road in the wintertime for emergency services and things like that. We're just finding that more and more, even, you know, product and time and stuff are being built on level Bs, and we aren't changing classifications for those, but we are trying to plow them, not maybe emergency plow, or not maybe first day plow, but as we go and clean things up, just because, unless there is an emergency, we'll go out to, right. We'll open them up, they just won't be the priority during the snow event, because.
Not road as it is.
That's true, yeah, so. Um, we're gonna give, uh, that movie you fall to, and so you can be present for the next city. Give us some information.
Um, and I did get an email from I A M U on Friday, that will, they would be interested, they've got sixty different classes they offer, areas. And, uh, he said we just need to go through and pick, pick which ones we would be interested in utilizing, and then you give a price on, on teaching those, and I told him, basically, and it'll be a cost just per time they come up here. Um, so I told him, you know, it might be once a month for the first year, and then probably quarterly after that, or whatever, every two months. Um, he said, no, you just tell me what areas you want, um, then we can price it out as.
Is that specific just to training and not necessarily helping us put plans and stuff together, just training?
Uh, I, yeah, I could ask a little more on that, if there's some.
Well, we'll, we'll work that out.
But like I said, just get a few options and then.
Right, yeah, we can do all the cart, figure what we need.
Yeah, exactly.
Mooney called me, he called me Sunday, Monday last week, and he was checking to see what we're.
Oh, okay, good.
Try to get him on safety deal, and he's, I know his theory was, he, I think they worked pretty hard with the that, you know, insurance carrier, and they would, I mean, one of his things would be is, we're taking the steps, you're getting our premium down too, so.
Right, he'd be working on.
I mean, he said the same thing already, no, we can't afford another year of increase, and it's gonna happen if we don't do something, so.
Right, right, so. Cool, right, anything else?
I don't know, you guys got something, you got any questions?
Get everything settled up with Elliot then.
I called him last week, I didn't get an answer back, so I was calling, I was calling on the, the advisory committee for the courthouse thing too, and I left messages with three people, and I haven't got any back yet, he was one of them, so. I said I wanna discuss some things, and I never got a call back, so, but I was working in the meantime, trying to figure out, and we do have that pipe in the yard from the last range, that'll fit there. And I thought I was gonna be able to make that pipe, the existing pipe fit somewhere else, but obviously, I just don't have, there's not enough room in some of the other spots that are, I need smaller pipe, not bigger ones, so. I still think that the pipe is in really good shape, I don't wanna just.
No, close enough.
But it's fifty-four feet, and try to mobilize it somewhere and set, set it somewhere. I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna try to find a spot, I'm not gonna say that it's, we're gonna try to find a place to bury it, we're gonna act, find a place where it could be useful to put in, if there's another one that's bad, but I'm not gonna just take one pipe out, just place this one somewhere else, but it would be nice to have a home for it. Once we pull it, we can put it somewhere else, but the other ones that I was looking at that I thought were gonna work, either aren't, that pipe isn't big enough, or need multiple pipe, or it's too big for the location set we can, so, perfect. But I, I still wanna use it, it's just, I think it's too good, but the problem, the reason we can't use it, unless we find a way, takes, use the existing one and modify it, so that we can, if, if the tapered ends weren't on that pipe, it would be a slam dunk. But it doesn't, the tapered ends on it just kinda screw things up, and they're long tapers, and try to, try to piece something over the top to, to slide it in, it just, it's a bolted, bolted plate arch, it's complicated to make that work. Okay, we can do things, I just don't want them to be, I mean, we could put head walls on it, but I just don't think that's the best answer either, I mean, we're dropping it a couple feet, so.
Yeah.
It's not that bad, but that's two more feet of fill on top.
Pretty steep.
It's already steep for some reason, so. So, I mean, the length is there, if they were to taper those pieces out, it would be a slam dunk, yeah, it just won't. We'll work with him when we get.
Yeah, no, I was just.
Make contact again. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, uh, drainage.
Deal.
Need to heard about what's.
I know, it was a DD forty-six, and they went into it.
Talking about up by Silver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that's, that's the, what I put on for discussion, so I didn't forget to bring it up. Um, Russ asked me again on Friday if, I don't know if there needs to be some classification change, or some land brought in, or.
Oh.
Cause they tapped into something.
Yeah, they, they, their, their original outlet was to Silver Lake.
Right.
They bypassed the lake into, to the outlet of Silver Lake, yeah, and so it crosses the shed line by doing that now. Don't argue, the water ends up the same place, but it's not going to the power, they're rerouting the outlet to get more fall.
And proceed.
And for, by doing that, you know, the, the lake is a, is a detention basin, so it, it's kind of a guy controlled outlet to, so that when you get high water, you know, it's, it's controlled the outlets, that you're not dumping more into that, well, they bypassed their detention and went right into it, so. I, I, I'm not the expert on, and I just know they crossed the shed line into.
Probably should be.
And Jacob will be here, can we run it by him and?
I would say yes.
Cause he's here for forty-six flat nine and.
Some people turn me upset and cross shed lines.
Well, it's not a legal thing to do to cross shed lines, begin with, I understand the, the thought behind it is my water ends up there eventually anyway. But we should say the same thing about the Mississippi.
Right.
That's happening on areas.
So, there are, and, and so, I don't know how the districts are set up to where. Jack, is that? He's zooming up in that area again.
Is it up in there somewhere?
Go over to Silver Lake.
Cause is it there, is it theirs, or?
No, it's.
Forty-six is.
Straight north, right, so we're like. Just go east, just straight east and north of Silver Lake.
Yep.
But forty, that's not forty-six anymore.
Yeah, well.
Well, that's the thing. It's right up in there somewhere.
Uh, go a little bit, it's gonna be, I remember, right?
Comes between those two sets of trees and.
It's short.
Yes, please.
I think, what they're doing is they're cross, the, the, there's a, they put a new main and they crossed here and went around, and then tied in down to this outlet.
We're seeing them put it in.
So there's not a district up here, is there?
Oh.
Is this a district, it doesn't show up on our, as labeled, does it?
I thought there was, but it's.
Well, and maybe it's another thing that either.
It doesn't look like there's a district up there, but they, so they're, they're, they're outletting into a district they don't pay into, so.
So they could, that should get extended as.
Well, that, or, yeah, I, I mean, I don't.
Classified as a lateral one up that way?
I suppose, but then you gotta do, you gotta do a, you have to classify it, and then what do you do with the property around it that's also?
And that's not even their lane.
It's.
They must have got permission.
They, I, I know that the, the reason they could, the, the reason they said they did what they did is, cause they couldn't get permission around tile through the private ground that was already their outlet, which I don't. Yeah, I know all the legalities behind that, but if you look at that grassy area to the.
They crossed right in here.
Yeah, they crossed right by that. Pretty sure they crossed right by that farm. Originally. Jack, you wanna slide that picture up a little bit? I think what they did is they, their normal outlet, I think ran somewhere over to here.
Yep.
But instead they bypassed, they couldn't, for some reason, I don't know, somebody wouldn't give them permission to cross into here, or whatever, so then they, they came down, and then they came, they came right through here, and, and then if you slide up some more, then they kinda went around these trees and followed this line.
Dumped it.
And then dumped it here.
That's the outlet.
This is the, I don't know, this is.
Kind of a fast, actual way to get.
I love it further downs.
Yeah, the original outlet, I think.
The outlet's right here.
Right there.
Right, this is the lake outlet, and I think there's, originally kinda came into here, this is where the original outlet was. But for some reason, they weren't allowed to come back in there, I don't know why, I don't, well, I don't know if there was any, well, or the landlords didn't want them.
Maybe they don't like them.
Terrible, it, it could be that, so they bypassed everything, came across the road, and then did this, well, they're not paying into this, according to what our drainage district maps are showing.
Yeah, I probably should be looking at a question.
Right, so I just didn't want that to leave the radar.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, you. It used to be asked, the question used to ask, maybe if they have the permission.
I don't think that they had, I don't think they didn't get permission, I think the landlords allowed them to run the tile through them, obviously, but.
Lost your layers.
Yeah, all layers are gone.
Oh, just refresh the page. Sorry. Those drainage layers, little stick.
Oh.
That's the extent, and I know what happened.
Yeah, well, Jacob's gonna be here, let's return by him. Let's do it, thanks, so they crossed.
Question for Hudson.
This one right here.
Yeah, they're, they're dumping into that district.
They came right through this district right here.
Yep, and they don't have, I, I don't think they're paying assessments, obviously, for that property up there, so.
Well, do you really need more water dumping into that district?
I mean, it's gonna dump into the lake, or it's gonna dump into the outlet.
But the, the lake's gotta control.
The lake controls the outlet.
So I mean, they're actually. I don't remember, it was, it was last year, it's pretty sizable, I think, wasn't it, I wanted to say it was at least a twelve or ten.
It's twelve, ten or twelve, yeah, cause he sent me, he called me on that, yeah, last fall sometime.
Well, you knew, you knew that they were doing this.
Well, when he started talking about it, yeah, then I remembered, and I, I think at that time.
I just went by that, seen them digging.
Yeah, that's when I found out too, is they were already through the road.
Can't remember if we asked. They were on, they were already in the drainage district when I.
Well, they crossed the road, yeah, but the property they're draining is. Well, they're not supposed to, but they did.
Forgive us later, right?
They're all.
Gosh, I saw the dreams. I mean, it's. Still should be something, I don't know, usually you get.
Yeah, that's, that's when they call, so they went right through the road, and said, okay, didn't even ask.
Yeah, when I saw it, it was on the south side of the road already. I guess, yeah, let's run it by Jacob, I guess, and see what he says, and, uh, figure it out from there.
That's probably an old district that's never been looked at, or, I mean, or hasn't been classified, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and four, well, and bring number forty-six was what, what's his name? The A U and Colby guy.
Oh.
But did, did Bolton make, reclassify just forty-six that nine, or nothing's happened with forty-six yet?
Haven't done anything yet.
I can't keep them screwed.
No, I don't, something, I don't think we've done that, I mean.
It might be the next one on the list, then.
If something's changing, it's, I, technically, we're supposed to do that.
Yeah.
I guess as trustees, you guys have.
Right. Well, it's only fair to the rest of the people that pay.
Well, yeah.
That's, you know, as, I know when we.
It's a game.
We got permission to do it, well, you got permission from who, because you are, yeah, you got permission from the landlord to run title, and they're not gonna care, but I think the rest of the landowners are gonna care that you're not paying part of the assessments when there's improvements being done, or is you're not being assessed.
Even though it's his own. How many acres do you add in?
Yeah, I don't know much they got there, yeah, they, I don't know how much they got there, I mean, at least.
Cause you're gonna assess off the acres that's going.
Yeah, right. I just remember when you're looking at that map, that's a DOT, or a D N R generated that map, or it's been some time ago, so I don't know about the accuracy of the data. They probably just use old contour lines to run it, so, I'm sure, they're close.
And that's even in the reclassifications, let's see how the maps, well, we make, yeah, let's show basically the same kinda setup, well, here, this is brought in, this is brought in, these little pieces here and there, so.
Light R is a pretty good tool now.
Yeah. Technology on that's.
Yeah.
Leads to balance what was.
Especially when you're just looking for high spots, you know, you're not looking for the actual two-foot increment, you're looking for that high spot, because that's determining where that boundary line is.
Yeah, we should have new lighter. The state was refilling it again. Covid got in the way, but.
That plane's not wanna fly.
Okay, well, yeah, Jacob gets here, do our hearing, we'll discuss that, so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna head to Mitchell County and then. My phone will be on, I just don't know.
But, um, are you, you are leaving?
You want me to stick around until now?
Well, yeah, COVID nineteen policy, you need to get that figured out, cause it ends at the end of the month. What's your thought on anything, I guess I'll just ask you now, and all that's the rest later.
I mean, up in our office, we've been smart, smart, I guess, we keep our distance from ourselves, the masks, people that come in still wear their masks.
Right.
We're around each other every day, well, we're not really around each other close enough to worry about it, so we do wear our masks when we feel like we want, you know. It hasn't been a hardcore, wear a mask every day in the office, I'll go back up there now, and I won't be wearing one. You know, if Russ and I, or Al and I are getting close, and we're talking, we're more than a few minutes, then we'll probably put something on, but I think that for the most part, I think we're not as concerned as we used to be, and I don't know if that's a good or bad thing to say publicly.
I'm off the public that.
We don't, haven't had a lot of people up there, so I mean, I think what we can do is make it optional, if they wanna feel, if they feel comfortable wearing one, then we don't have a problem with it. I don't know how the rest of the department heads feel.
Yeah, that's what we're not discussing, I was kinda wondering what to do, because we.
I mean, anything.
We left everything on through the end of the month, and we just need to get something.
And the rest of our shop, I mean, people, the guys in the shop there, yeah, I, I don't.
I know you don't get a lot of public.
We don't get a lot of public in there, and I think everybody that works together out there, um, they're around each other, they keep their distances, so I don't know that that's been an issue, kind of. I can't, I can't say that I know exactly what they're doing, and for hygiene and everything else, whether they're washing their hands all the time, like, my guess is it's not happening, but. Yeah, but when they're out there, especially when you're in your own vehicle the whole time, so. All right, I guess whatever everybody else wants to do, we'll just probably be fine with.
Go forward then. All good.
All right, thanks for.
Uh, is there anything else on drainage that you need to?
Don't fall off them. It's buried.
Just wait till ten thirty on the completion hearing.
Yeah.
All right, claims, you guys look, claims over. Yes.
There are any. You don't beat the whole thing.
So you just do this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know there was something else on there.
Any questions or concerns on that?
Didn't see anything.
Nothing that jumped out here. We already knew in advance about some of it.
Yeah.
Oh. Right. There's a motion to prove.
Eight forty-five, was somebody trying to get in? I forgot about that.
Uh, there's a couple Maria Boyd's on.
Yeah, sorry, they, they were supposed to. Yeah, Su- Susan's the one that's doing the presentation, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Got talking drainage.
Oh, I'll make a second. Second on the claims, or any other discussion on that? All favor I? I, most. Carrie.
You guys should have spoke up. Yeah, to get carried away.
I don't know, I was kind of enjoying the whole discussion of drainage before my second cup, cup of coffee.
You need a third after that.
Nobody enjoys drainage.
You need something in your coffee.
Oh, all right, uh, good morning, ladies.
Morning.
Yeah.
Um, go ahead, Marie.
I'll just jump in real quick and admit that I'm here just to thank you for your time and interest in talking about land preservation around agriculture, and you all know healthy harvest and what we're up to in North Iowa, but, um, we've really gotten more involved in this conversation about land and land access and preservation um, in the area, so I wanted to bring Susan in to talk from Silt, so I'll just pass it right over to Susan.
Thanks. Um, can you let me share my screen, the host person?
Sure.
Then if you don't, then you don't have to look at my ugly mug for the whole time.
Should be good.
Excellent, okay, so, uh, we've been talking to, uh, it's still the supervisors from around the state, actually. It's been mostly an excuse to, we're talking about this Land Owners Guide to Sustainable Food Crops that we're gonna talk to you about, but it's mostly an excuse to introduce Silt too, so, since Marie, um, introduced it as land access and everything, I'll tell you a little bit about what Silt is. We are a statewide land trust, we're the newest one in the, in the state. And, uh, land trust is just a nonprofit, but it's a special kind of one that can make a forever promise on land that we don't own, so that's called a conservation easement. You guys have probably heard of those, um, and we, um, we do it, we protect land, not for trees and rivers and prairie, we protect land to keep it as a farm in perpetuity. So, in Iowa, you might think, well, why would you bother with that, we got an awful lot of farms, but the farms that we try to protect, or that we do protect, are right around our growing metro areas. You know, you guys must know, that's the most expensive land in Iowa, it's, uh, you know, it's up against housing development, or it's up against high commodity crop prices, either way, it's always high. But the farmers, and there's a lot more of them now than, than there were, than there probably have been in about a hundred years, who wanna grow table food crops or specialty crops, they need to be close to their markets, or else they're putting all their profits in their gas tank. So, these little twenty to forty to a hundred acre farms surrounding our communities. So these little twenty to forty to a hundred acre farms surrounding our communities. Are a way to, to provide affordable land access to young farmers, because it, it drops the price when you limit the use of the land. Um, and it's also a way to build national food security, because when things like. Tariffs and other international trade or things like a pandemic hit, um, it's nice to know you can. You know, look down the road and find someone who's growing food for you when you need it, and I think this pandemic really, uh, made it really clear that. Diversifying our food economy is probably a good thing to do in our ag economy here in Iowa, so. So that's what we do, we permanently protect land like that with conservation easements, in other words, an agreement the landowner voluntarily puts on their deed. That says it's gonna be in nature-friendly food production, table food production in perpetuity. Or sometimes people donate some or all of their land to us. If they don't have kids, or if their kids are grown and, and, you know, doing fine on their own, or, I don't know, or worthless, whatever, they, they, they give us their land. So that's what we do, and we were here today just to introduce you to, and I'll take plenty of questions on that anytime. I think Marie is especially interested in what we're working on in Lynn County called Agro Communities. A place where a developer can make a lot of money if he plans to have an organic food farm, uh, in the middle of his development. Um, houses tend to go for about thirty-five to forty percent more. Um, they sell on, they're bigger houses sold on smaller lots, which developers love and they sell faster. So that's something you may wanna, we may wanna talk about later. But first, I wanna introduce you to our little Land Owner's Guide. When we started Silt, we didn't realize we'd have to remind landowners. That, uh, their land actually grows, could grow table food if they wanted to, but it's since it's been about fifty or sixty years, um, some folks have forgotten. So we went ahead and got help from the Sustainable Ag Research and Education Department of USDA to help us with this. So you have a copy of this book, I think we mailed you one, but we can mail you more. Uh, and we also have it online in a couple of different ways, so. Um, it's just a little guide, and we say that it's for landowners, because this guide is not meant to teach farmers how to grow this food. Okay, I know how to grow a lot of this food, and I can tell you, you couldn't have gotten it into a, a little guide. But, uh, but it is to remind landowners that their land can grow food, and maybe get them to start experimenting in that. Or maybe let their kids who come back from Iowa State, you know, play on a couple of acres or something, you know, nothing that's gonna break the bank, but, but to see what would grow. So it's broken into fruits, nuts, vegetables, livestock, and then niche crops. And, um, each page, uh, looks like this, it's got a, um, a pretty picture at the top, this is a persimmon. A lot of folks don't know what persimmons are, they're really wonderful fruit, especially after the frost. Um, they grow on trees, small trees. And, um, and we have in each, each picture, a, a short description of the crop. And then we have a little scale here that says, kind of in relation to other, um, food crops, what's the capital and labor costs? Um, and then some reason for why we came up with that number. Um, and then we have some cream of the crop resources at the bottom, pun intended. Uh, one or two, and then a little scale of, on a truly diversified farming operation, where does this plant, uh, and, or animal. Fit into the whole picture, so we made that little icon so people could see where, where things go, um, if they're looking at that kind of farming. And then this is a honey berry, by the way, these are also known as haskap, they would do great in Worth County, they do very well in the northern climates. They don't need, uh, any soil amendments like blueberries do. Nobody's ever heard of them here, but honestly, I, I, sitting at a farmer's market giving away free samples is the best way to build the market, cause they're so good, they taste like a. Kind of a blueberry raspberry mix. Um, and like I said, they don't need soil amendments, so they're more sustainable.
Books, yeah.
Um, then we have four profiles of landowners who've gone from some other job into this kind of work, or they may have even started, you know, on the family farm of corn and soybeans, and then changed into specialty crops. So, um, this is one, that little fuzzy thing between Tom and Kathy is a chestnut burr. And they, those chestnuts fall off the trees and they, and that burr breaks open and that little chestnut you might see in the grocery store or you heard about in the song. Um, land on the ground. So basically, the tree picks itself, and then on top of that, Tom and Kathy over the last thirty years have built up a market where people come and pick up those chestnuts. Themselves and still pay them. So these guys are, um, netting about seven thousand dollars per acre per year. In chestnuts, um, on their farm in southeast Iowa. And a lot of people are planting chestnuts now thanks to them, but they're not worried, because we, I think they told me we import something like six billion dollars worth of chestnuts a year to the US. So clearly, there's a market here. Uh, and they're, they're loving it, and it's a beautiful place to walk around and take your family and everything, uh, on a fall, on a fall day. We have some more additional resources in the back, and, and then on our, um. On our website, we have the whole, uh, book, it's all interactive, you can just click on something and see more. Um, or you can download the PDF, you know, so we have it in all the ways that people might want it, in print or in a PDF, or, or just playing around on the web. Uh, and, you know, we encourage you, we're coming to supervisors because. You guys are elected and you know more people in your county than anybody else. And you might just know somebody in a situation where they think that might be a pretty cool idea, to play around with an acre or two of something, and see if there's a market for it, see if the neighbors like it. Um, and, and then our, and our interest is to find those kind of folks. And then talk to them about making their farm permanent, you know, making sure that their farm doesn't get turned into a parking lot, or. Um, or even just sold to the next bigger farmer, you know, some folks are really. Interested in keeping their family farm the size of a, you know, the traditional family farm, farm, or like a hundred and sixty acres or two hundred acres or so, and. Um, and they, and they wanna hang on to that heritage, and they wanna keep it a size and keep it diversified for the future. So if you know any of those folks, I know it's a needle in a haystack, we're actually talking to some folks in Worth County already. But if you know some, it'd be great if you steered them towards this book or towards silt.org, and said, hey, there's some folks over there you might wanna talk to. Some people ask me, you know, how do you talk farmers into doing this, or how do you talk landowners into doing this? We don't talk anybody into anything. All we're doing is looking for the folks who, who have been looking for us. And honestly, we were founded by twenty-five people who all fought in the last farm crisis in the eighties. And we're just tired of seeing these farm crises come up every forty years. And now the crisis is that land prices have quintupled, they've gone up five hundred percent in the last twenty-five years. If anybody thinks a young farmer can get on the land. Uh, in that situation, you're dreaming, or it's, it's a kid who's, you know, can leverage his dad's thousand acres, right? So, um, we're hoping that we can just stop this every forty-year farm crisis and make sure that our, our land is diversified, so that. When the next thing happens, the next big bug, or the next Chinese tariff, or whatever it is, we can kind of balance it out across the state, and make sure that at least some farmers are, are not. Um, suffering when others might be struggling because of the market. Could you? I'm sharing an office with my hubby and he's clacking away over there, so I'm gonna just ask him to wait. So, I got my ten minutes of fame here, and he's messing with me. Okay, so any questions or thoughts? And Marie, feel free to join in.
Questions?
No, I think it's in her, so definitely look that up to.
She should just be on mute, but.
Okay. No, it's a, it's a pretty cool program, and, uh, didn't realize. Yeah, some of those trees or berries and stuff like that, I mean, would actually go good in this area.
Yeah, chestnuts used to be pretty prevalent around here, but then they all died off, I think, years ago, but. I just, just read some articles on chestnuts too, it was kinda interesting, you know, it kinda plays in your back of your mind doing that stuff. It's always a little harder to do like a U-Pick up here, I think, or whatever. When you're not so close to a metropolitan area or whatever, and I saw those honey berries in one of the seed books that came out, that's was, you know. Cause we got a few raspberry plants, a few blueberry plants and stuff, and maybe I'll get some of those, so it's good to know they're growing Iowa, hopefully North Iowa anyway.
Right, oh, we've got a couple.
Do you?
Grandpa planted them a long time ago.
Okay. So.
Yeah, there's, um, also, uh, we know a guy in Winfield, um, southeast Iowa, well, he just passed, but his family. Has been selling chestnuts for twenty years, and he sells them all over the country, and, and he was very old-fashioned, he was ninety-one when he passed. And he'd just get on the phone to grocery stores and restaurants all over the country. All during the season and to say, you want, you know, how many you wanna need, and it was J and B's chestnuts, and, and he also was making seven to eight thousand a year. And the cool thing about, cause shipping, he could just ship them, that's the great thing about nuts and meat these days, especially with meat. And, uh, he, um, he employed the people of Winfield every fall, you know? The Eric people would just come out and pick those chestnuts and bag them and label them. So it was a little seasonal job for the folks who lived there, his four acres, five acres are right inside the city limits, so we didn't protect those. He said, I wanna give the people in Winfield an option, so I don't wanna permanently protect those acres, but he protected another hundred and thirty acres. Um, just ten miles away. That he's had prairie and trees, because he loved the idea of a young farmer being able to use that land and, and a way that saves the soil and still honors what he, he and his wife were doing. By the way, for, I just want you guys to know that farmers, um, you know, who make more than half their money from farming. Um, get, uh, there's a federal law available for people who permanently protect their land. That is a sixteen-year, one hundred percent deduction of your AGI. Just replacing that conservation easement on your property, whether or not you ever sell it. I think it's kind of sweet, especially for century and heritage farmers. Um, to consider, because, you know, it's a really sweet tax deduction without having to go into debt for some, you know, new paint, right? So, um, it's, uh, something for them to consider, and landowners who are not farmers. Uh, they could see a fifty percent deduction of their adjusted gross income up to sixteen years. And the reason why that's in place, aside from twenty years of hard work from land trust people and others. Um, is that you see about a thirty to forty percent drop in your value. When you protect your land. Appraisers don't like to see anything that happens forever, and certainly not some, now my dog is getting in the act, forgive me. Um, it's like that kind of morning around here, the phone ringing, everything. Um, but, uh, you know, when you see that kind of drop, then that, that amount that drops is considered the charitable donation to the land trust. But since most people can't take, you know, a four hundred thousand dollar deduction in one year, they spread it out up to sixteen years. And then in Iowa, there's a twenty-year state tax credit. Up to a hundred thousand dollars. So these are some things that people should know when they're thinking about it, I don't. I think there's better ways to hide your money from the government, conservation easements are pretty complicated. But if folks are motivated by the idea, it's worth explaining, and then, you know, if they got a few. Heirs or siblings who are hedging, you know, sometimes the tax benefits can be a good conversation.
It's good to know, I mean, I know a couple younger people in my area right now that are struggling to add on to their acreages, they, they were able to buy a farm site with four or five acres and. They're doing some things, or even up to ten acres, and, you know, they're kind of maxed out on what they're doing, but. To buy the land around them or even find land to rent is, is near impossible, you know, they've asked. I said, well, I do know a couple more places coming up for sale, but you know, you're talking some pretty serious cash, even if. You know, here, I think land, land costs, somebody I just saw the other day in Iowa right now, are averaging right around ten thousand dollars an acre, so you know.
Yeah.
They come to me, and I mean, it'd say that if I own the land around them, it's hard not to, you know. So it's tough for them even up in this area where we're not close to metropolitan, so, but it's, it's good to know, you know, that option's there.
Yeah, by the way, if there's a, a farmer surrounding, a farmland owner surrounding those folks. They might consider, um, if they're selling more of their land, they're gonna be seeing some capital gains. And then putting the deduction, you know, putting some of that land surrounding those young people into the easement. Helps, you know, offset those capital gains. So for every person, it's a different deal, but we love to kind of play around with that formula, and then of course, send them to their advisors, you know, your, your lawyer and your CPA are the best ones to tell you what to do, what works, but. But there seems to me like a lot of combinations can help get these young people on the land, because ten acres. You can grow a lot of vegetables on there, but you can't keep your fertilizer on there, you can't run a lot of animals on ten acres. But you can rotate, um, sheep and cattle and chickens and pigs around on twenty or forty acres pretty effectively, and keep all your, your fertilizer on the, on the land. And, and then if you've got some rough ground like timber, you can run, uh, animals in there or start some agro forestry thing going on in there. There's ways to max out the land that, you know, our grandparents used to know how to do, and they may not be very efficient. Uh, but we got a whole generation of millennials who wanna reconnect with people, and. You know, maybe they grew up in the suburbs and they all had their own lawnmower, I don't know, but they wanna reconnect, they wanna do this hard work, well, God bless them, right? And, uh, but we gotta give them access to the land.
Absolutely, because I'm old and I don't wanna do that work anymore. I'm done with that, so.
I hear you, I tell everyone, we're too old in this house to have livestock, the two dogs and the six chickens are enough for us, but, um, yeah. So anyway, thanks for listening to us, and I don't know if Marie's got something to add, but, um, I just wanted to, uh, offer to you, if you'd like us to mail you a few of these free guides to. Leave in the office or pass out to people, we'd be glad to do that, just tell me how many.
Yeah, it'd be great, I, I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's a dozen or so, and.
Okay.
Be good to look through for us, and then, yeah, we'll leave them out here.
Spread them around a little.
Yeah.
Great. Will do.
And I wanted to jump in, just say, of course, you know, we're always trying to keep our eye out for local food farmers who are looking to step in, and. Um, we're thankful to, uh, Susan and Silt for being able to be a resource on the land side of things, but. Even, uh, Mark, you mentioned the U-Pick kind of being in a more rural area and whether that can be successful, and I think that there's a great example of Otter Creek Orchard is up. Uh, that very, very north part of San Ansgar, basically in Minnesota border, and they have an amazing season every year, the last couple of years. Um, they drop it all out, so I think U-Picks are one of those agritourism events that people wanna travel for. So if there's some of those crops, that can be a great benefit, um, the honey berry sounds really awesome, I love berries, so you know, there, there's all this, this fun specialty crop. Um, support going on, um, statewide, also nationally, as far as different grants for those farmers as well, so, um. There's just lots of really great resources, and anybody who's interested, you know, send them our way. Um, whether it's Silt or Healthy Harvest, or otherwise, we'd love to connect with them, so thank you for your interest and your time and your support as always for our work.
Right, well, thanks, Maria, Susan.
Thanks, everybody, appreciate the time. Now, get back to your drainage issues and we'll talk to you sometime soon.
Yeah. All right, thanks, have a good day.
Take care.
Interesting. Good stuff. It's good info to. Get a hold of us. All right, um, claims are done, is there any reports? Okay. Uh, payroll eligibility?
Nope.
Lucky license?
Nope.
Discussion assessing civil penalty on tobacco sold to a minor. Um, you guys saw those emails from Jeff?
Yes.
Sounds like it's pretty well cut and dried, either we go after the money or the state gets it.
We just will have it here.
Yeah. Right.
Doesn't matter, we just will have it.
Right. Um, so I mean, and it sounds like the clerk is just guilty, so the money's going somewhere no matter what.
Yeah, just so he's up. Help us walk through it, so.
Right.
The process, whatever it is, so.
Yeah. Um, so I guess, should we just give Jeff permission to? Um. Go for that? Assess the penalty then? Don't you guys think?
I think so.
Want a motion to do that?
I'll make that a motion.
Okay. I'll second it. All right, motion a second to, uh, to go for the civil penalty on the tobacco sold to a miner. Uh, any other discussion on it? Nah, here and now, all favorize?
All right.
I, both? All right, I'm motion will carry and contact Jeff and tell him to pursue that. Okay, safety committee, we kinda had a little discussion, I guess.
Yeah, so Rich, apparently got a hold of Mark Moody, the person we talked to.
Jim.
Jim. Okay, excuse me, yeah, so, um. That's gonna be one that'll become immediate, it sounds like, so.
Good, no, I think, I think say this other guy, I'll, I'll. Try to get some info out of them and just see what their options are, what their costs are. Kind of things, and go with the best plan we can, and try to get some started here before too long.
Absolutely.
Well. Okay. Uh, we're on vacation, leave alone, what was it, Becko, Melissa?
Morning. Whoops.
There you are.
Um, last week, we had a legislative forum on Friday morning. Um, I spoke with Jane and Wayland, and they may do a third one after the next funnel week. Um, so I'll keep posted on that, and then, um, Winnebago County has a forum this week. So mainly been focusing some time on the forums.
Yeah. Um. I was gonna ask you something, but I don't remember, remember what it was, oh, maybe you had any more, any more interest in the lots by chance, or?
I did speak to one company who had some questions about that RFP that I sent out, and it's due on Wednesday back to me. And so then I'll probably get back together with, um, Mark and John and Enos, I'll, I'll let you, uh, know. What that date is in case you wanna join us. Um, prior to March thirty-first, which is the due date for that grant.
All right, and then, um, we've got Vanguard Company, appraisal company that does all of our appraisals for the county. Um, doing some work on it for us, we should hopefully hear something within the next two weeks, so.
Okay.
Ideas on pricing of, of comparable lots or, or just in general, so then we can establish our prices here. And get those things out there, so.
Perfect.
Process is taking a lot longer than I imagined, but. All right?
I'm just glad we're this far, actually.
Right.
But yeah. Trying to get it done.
Yeah. Other words, I'll see you tomorrow, right?
You bet.
Sounds good, thank you.
You bet.
Uh, Jason on today?
Let's see, I'm just, yeah.
Um, you guys saw an email come through, you got an estimate for. If we would decide to run water up to that new tower, um, that's what I sent you guys. Um, that's what I sent you guys this morning.
I just looked at it.
Um, so. Yeah, it's not bad. Um, it's actually a pretty good shot because it'll be in our right of way. So we have, you know, the easement's already there. Um, there's just a few tile crossing, a few driveway crossings to repair, so it's just pretty well. He said it'd probably go really good.
Maybe good for WCD.
Might be. Um, and then uh, he's gonna work on numbers for uh, water tower inspections. Get them both inspected this year, see what's going on if we want to. Um, and then uh. With the numbers, the estimates, I can, we can use that to uh, for consideration on our water rate study as well. If you wanted to use something like that to start building a little more capital in there, so we're allowed, you know, make more improvements out there. Or just use it for advertising to sell it, whatever you wanna do. So anyways, yeah. Anyways, um, so that's where we're in that. Like I said, he's hoping maybe this week to, so to get those other members for the towers, but. So also at that, so we can get our water rates going. Something, those lots are moving, something we're gonna have to pursue, at least you get an idea of what are the costs.
Good.
Um, Chris, I'm in, I think he's coming next week.
Yeah, he was gone this week.
He's gonna be gone this week on vacation, so.
So I did see you go, it's water rates, whatever it's stuff to.
Yeah. Um, did see some bills come through on that. Obviously, the one was that pressure relief valve. We knew that was coming. Um, we've been around since last fall, we're able to get the parts. Um, one thing I am a little distraught with is the, the other bill for replacing chlorine. And sodium permanganate signs. I feel that's something people's service should be doing. It's not, it's something, it's something should be done every year. Um, we shouldn't have had to pay a site source to do that. So I'll bring that up to those guys. I've gotta talk with them anyways on their contract again. And water rate study and, and some other stuff, uh. To me, that's something they should be handling, but.
But it's not something that, new contract, I'm gonna look that up.
Right. Yeah, so um, that's pretty general maintenance out there and it's. Yeah, I think so. Um, but anyways, I got a little discussion with them this week, so.
Okay.
Uh, parma heads. So here we're coming to the end of the month. That's when our COVID nineteen policies were set, or extended to. Um, kinda discuss again at the end of the month, which is next week, so. Um, hope you've all been considering, thinking what's the thoughts are with the status of the courthouse and the county buildings. Um, any questions or concerns by anybody? What do you wanna do?
I think at this point, you know, it should be optional if a employee feels uncomfortable, they can wear a mask. If the public feels uncomfortable, they can wear a mask. I think everybody's sort of educated and, and has their comfort level and.
The only thing about going optional is that it'll just be, you, you can't make somebody do it. You can't, it'll just be a free feel.
Right, if you wanna wear it, you wanna wear it. If you don't, you know, that's the thing. So that, that's what, I mean, that's what we're asking, I guess, is what.
Well, what I noticed is inside the departments, they don't wear them anyway, which is fine with me.
Well, as long as they're in their desk.
As long as they're in their desk, but do the employees still want people coming in and out without a mask on or how, what do they feel?
Teresa just said mask optional for her.
As far as the sheriff's office, I think ma- mask optional is fine for the courthouse. Coming back into the jail area will still require everybody to have masks on.
See, and then if you go both ways, you won't know where.
Right.
And you know what, public health, they're gonna wear a mask for sure. I would think.
One of all the people through there is gonna be.
Same deal when they're not at the desk, I think, to do, they're at their desk, they probably don't.
I mean, people coming in and out.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, it was, last Friday, it was still.
Um, the traffic there's gonna be heavy for.
And I don't know how the treasurer's office feels about it. They have the, other than public health right now, they'd have the most traffic.
Right, right, between those two.
State isn't even, they're barely even open to the public yet, let alone do we wear masks or not.
Right, well, no, even some communities are still pretty well shut down or limited.
Mason City just opened up their city hall this week.
To let people in.
Yeah. Stores are still wanting you to wear them. I mean, it might change April first, but.
Right, right. So we wanna just run another, run a month at a time until we feel comfortable that everybody's on the same page and.
I think it should be all or nothing.
Right, yeah, I agree. I um, you're either gonna. Treat it all offices the same or, or not, or all buildings, I should say. But. Mark sent an email, he said.
I'm looking for it. What's that to you guys?
He recommends to stay the course for now, working positive rates below. Zero in the last seven days in county.
Yeah, whole seven days.
Hey, yeah, that's.
We're headed in the right direction.
It's good numbers.
And they are vaccinating as fast as they can, so.
Another month would get more people vaccinated. You're getting close to herd immunity, but whatever the employees wanna do is.
Right.
Yeah, you guys are the ones that are heroes.
Yeah.
I say, I guess, let's leave it in place for another month, is my recommendation. Um, we've been this far. We're doing a very good job. Why spoil it or ruin it? I mean, I know I'm second one too, everybody's second one, but it's just the fact that. It's helping, it's doing the right thing. So that's my thought.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We can discuss it.
Both of us that wanna wear them, wear them, and those that should have some.
It's gotta be the same. For, for all buildings and, but, you know, I'm sure. I'm sure tax for uh, treasurer's been busy because taxes are due here at the end of the month, so they've probably been a little busier than normal too this month.
Hope so.
I hope so too. If not, I'll probably send them in the mail.
Going on?
Paying for the month, okay.
So.
Not gonna give us any expertise and interest?
Nope, not this year.
Uh, that's, if you guys find with that, then let's extend it till uh, April thirtieth. Well, around the, continue to run the COVID nineteen policy through April thirtieth as, as stands, uh, masks. Um, are required in all, all buildings, all county buildings. So, take a motion to approve or to extend that to April thirtieth. A second.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion on it? All favor I?
All right.
Bye, opposed, motion will carry. Continue for now and those play it month by month. All right. Board appointments, uh, like I said, I do have one for board adjustment. I just need to give them the paperwork, so, and that's on the website, you said, which is in last year? That, that application is, okay. I'll, I'll get a hold of, it's like, say, actually one of our township trustees, Joe Thompson, so.
So the board information on the website has not been updated for a while, so just to keep as you're aware.
The.
Yeah, and I kinda, I, I, I don't know if that needs to be set up a different way or I just, I don't know.
As far as Susan.
Well, it's just how it's presented. I, I kinda, I don't know. It, it's not easy to keep it updated and.
It's one big PDF. But I know we haven't updated that information.
And I've, I've been trying to keep up, but.
All right, I'll get a, go and get the paperwork filled out and get that back up here. Um, and then we, do we still need someone for zoning commission?
Uh, I'm not sure yet because I don't know if it's officially moved or not.
Oh, okay. All right, so let's set this covered. Supervisor Weekly, yes.
I had the second judicial district department of correction services meeting and they went through the budget. Uh, they had approved the one point one percent salary for twenty-one, twenty-two for the employees. And right now they're off twenty-three percent in admissions, but they're still running seventy-five percent for facility capacity, which is normal for them. But other than that, they basically, oh, they did talk a lot about this. Bill that is going through the house right now, six seventy-eight. And they're not for it because I was already ahead of the bill, so if we pass that bill, we end up behind. We're going backwards. So the state of Iowa's not for that at all. They talked a long time about that.
Sure.
So, that's the only one I had.
That, yeah. Uh, Mark?
I had Nikoa meeting, which basically was just a more of a training session for some of the new supervisors, some of the new committee members that were coming on. And then also had board of health, which we just basically meant to approve the reduction in the budget and stuff that. So we had that budget approved and everything as well and everybody's good with it, so that's all I had.
Yeah, um, I didn't have anything last week. Can you get my week spread out? We got a bunch going this week, so I got two tomorrow. Within like an hour of each other, so. So, um, others, I didn't have anything last week, so. Um, next week's items for review. If there's anything else coming up, um. It's another at each workshop next week.
Month or next Monday will be a busy one.
Yeah, it'll be, it looks like. So that, uh, I got called on that too, fourteen.
Why don't they just wait and go to the meeting? There's been people calling us too. It's like, come on.
What happened was this guy just, the guy just bought the land and he got contacted by the previous owner.
Yeah.
So he was wondering about that, about how to get access or to come, cause he's actually gonna be out of town. Um, I said, there is a Zoom option, so I just wanna make sure that we are gonna have Zoom options for each right. Just so I can, I can email him or get it to him so that he can be a part of it, because he's one of them that kinda started the, the discussion down here. But by Keenan, so. Um, I'm trying to get, to get that figured out, but.
Good, except I've had a couple conversations in forty-eight too, and so just will wait till the meeting.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so.
They're probably gonna get a letter from partners for children that they want everybody in the county to wear blue April first. For the month of April for child abuse prevention.
So we should do a proclamation for that or something.
We could, yeah.
They might, have they recommended a proclamation? Cause usually they have the wording for it.
Right, and they're gonna send you a letter on it. We should get a letter this week. I'm just telling you to keep your eyes open for it, okay? So we get it on the agenda for next week.
It should be a proclamation, if that's something they recommend, maybe contact and do that, and we could, that way it'd be.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can get ahold of them. Get back, touch it to Jackie.
Yeah. All right, um, nothing else then. We will just recess the meeting.
Just, just adjourned.
We can do it, because it's a separate. Post to adjourn.
All right, there's most adjournments, your second?
I second it.
All right, any other discussion? Favor I?
All right.
Hi, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.